Okay, welcome everybody to what is tonight the 18th? September 18th meeting of the Town of Los Gatos Council. Could I have a roll call please?
Thank you and good evening. Councilmember Barbara Spector.
Here.
Councilmember Marieke Sayak.
Here.
Councilmember Marcia Jensen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Steve Leonardis.
Here.
Mayor and Chair Rob Renney.
Here. All right, so at this time if I could ask my pledge leader to come up and help me lead the pledge. Torrin Hoffman, please join me up here. Welcome. So we're gonna tell people a little bit about you. So your name is Torrin Hoffman and you go to Van Meter and you're in the 4th grade, you said, right? Okay. And you like reading, basketball, and math. Anything else?
Not really.
Okay, well, those are good ones to start with. All right, so let's ask everybody to stand please. And I'm gonna give it to you. So go ahead and tell people to join you. In that direction, so.
Join me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good job. So go shake Marcia's hand over here. And a little treat for you. Thank you for coming. Okay, one more hand for Torrin, please. Okay, so now I have a commendation for our small business big applause. So if I could ask Menaz, the members of Menaz, to join me up here. So we have, let me read our commendation first here. So it says, "Menaz is an upscale boutique," I think it's actually a premier boutique, "in downtown Los Gatos. You've been here since March 6, 1998. Lots of good longevity." It's you, your name is Menaz Takamani?
Bravo.
Okay. You're a buyer and you're the curator, it looks like. And you're dedicated to dressing and elevating the lifestyles of Silicon Valley to a higher confidence and joie de vie, joie de vivre, through the styles and products carried in the boutique. Sounds good. "Menaz donates leftover pieces to various organizations, individuals, and feels fortunate to have the opportunity to make a difference for their clients. So now therefore, the Town of Los Gatos does hereby render with special appreciation and commendation to Menaz for 20 years of service to the Los Gatos community." Thank you. So let's get a picture first, I guess. Would you like to say a few words?
Well, I don't know. First of all, good evening. Thank you all for coming. More than anything, thank you for nominating me. I feel so privileged to be a resident. I am a resident, not currently, but I've been and I'm coming back.
Good.
And just to be nominated tonight, thank you all.
And does everybody know where your shop is? It's on Main Street, near the Coffee Roasting Company, right? Okay, well, go, come visit Menaz. Thank you. Okay, so next up should be council matters if I... Yep, council matters. If we start with Councilmember Spector, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since the last meeting, there was a Community Conceptual Development Advisory Committee, CDAC, meeting where we considered two matters. One was a review of a potential rezoning of property on Los Gatos Boulevard on which the ACE hardware is currently located. There was a lot of community input and interest in that item. And then we also had another item where we discussed and gave input on a potential change from rental to condominium for property located on the corner of University Avenue and Highway 9.
Thank you. Councilmember Sayak.
Since our last public meeting, I've just had several community meetings and with individual homeowners.
Thank you. Let's see, just as I was about to read mine, a message came up in front of it. So I've been, it's funny how two weeks, lots of things pile up. So on 9/5, the manager and I met with the chamber director and the chamber president to work out things together. We always work closely with the chamber. On 9/6, I attended the VTA Board Meeting where I'm an alternate. Also, I attended the VTA PAC on 9/13. That's the Policy Advisory Committee. On 9/6, I attended the Cities Association Board. On 9/9, I attended Holy Cross Lutheran Church 60th Anniversary and said a few words and congratulated them on 60 years of service to Los Gatos. 9/10, I attended the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Authority Risk Oversight Committee and then attended their board meeting on 9/12. 9/11, I attended the U.S. Mayor's Conference Alliance for Sustainable Future. Very interesting. 9/13, I did a ribbon cutting for the grand reopening of the Office Depot. And it's very interesting to go check out the Office Depot. They've been innovating themselves and they now have a shared office space for any innovators, entrepreneurs that can rent a desk or rent a little office with, in the glass. They've got conference rooms, they have other services. So I'd check out the Office Depot. I think it's really cool that it's actually one of their pilots, that they're doing it in Los Gatos. 9/13, I also did an interview with K-Move Radio. It was pre-recorded. I don't think they've shown it yet, or shown it, or had it on the radio yet. And then on 9/14, I also did a ribbon cutting for Redemption, which is kind of a cool new store at 25 North Santa Cruz. New retail store, lots of neat little stuff in there. If I remember correctly, they said everything they had is made in California. And on 9/16, I attended the Police Foundation fundraiser. That's it for me. Vice Mayor Leonardis.
Thank you, Mayor Renney. Since our last meeting, I attended three meetings on behalf of the town. One was the West Valley Sanitation District Board of Directors meeting. Nothing to report of substance from that one. I also attended the West Valley Solid Waste Management Authority meeting and the West Valley Clean Water Program Authority. Also, nothing to report, other than future closed session items and agenda setting. Thank you.
Councilmember Jensen.
Along with Councilwoman Spector, I also attended and chaired the Conceptual Development Advisory Committee meeting. And it's a non-biding, the committee provides non-biding feedback to people who have proposals for different land uses in the town. And those members of the committee that heard the ACE hardware, I know there was a huge amount of interest in it. The committee unanimously recommended to the developer applicant proposer that ACE not be converted to a medical office use.
Thank you. Manager matters?
Thank you. I've got several items for you this evening. First of all, the new artwork in the council chambers is thanks to the patients of El Camino Hospital here in Los Gatos. There will be a reception on September 20th at 6 o'clock in these chambers. Second, we are happy to present Screen on the Green on September 28th, and we're showing Transylvania, so that'll be a lot of fun for our families. On October 1st, we're holding a joint Planning Commission Town Council Workshop to kick off our general plan update, and the public is welcome to join us. And finally, we are now in our recruitment phase for boards and commissions. We eagerly encourage our residents to apply. Virtually every commission has an opening, and applications are due on October 26th. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So next up is consent calendar. Would any members of council wish to pull an item from consent? Okay, seeing none, I have two cards for item 7 on the consent calendar, so the public would like to pull item number 7. Would any member of the public wish to pull an additional item beyond number 7? Okay, seeing none, I'll come back to the council for a motion. For the rest of the consent calendar. Councilmember Jensen.
We've to approve the consent calendar 1 through 6, excluding 7.
Okay, do I have a second? I have a second. Any recruesals, any comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Seeing none, passes unanimously. So next up, I'm gonna go to verbal communications. This is, this is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to us for three minutes on a subject that is not on the consent calendar. So let me start off with Carl Guardino.
Mayor Renney and members of the council, my name's Carl Guardino. I'm here tonight as the Executive Director of the Silicon Valley Leadership Group Foundation because I heard some of you were wondering where you needed to be on Thanksgiving morning, November 22. So we would like to invite you to be our guests for our 14th Annual Applied Materials Silicon Valley Turkey Trot. Our goal this year is what we call Mission 1 Million. That is an ambitious goal to donate this year's proceedings of at least $1 million for five great local nonprofits that help local families in need. That's the Second Harvest Food Bank of Santa Clara and San Mateo Counties, the Food Bank of Santa Cruz County, the Housing Trust, the Health Trust, and the Healthier Kids Foundation. It hopefully isn't as daunting as it sounds. For the past five years, we've been able to donate annually between 905,000 and 936,000. So we're trying to close a delta of roughly 64,000 to 95,000 so that we can serve more families that are so needy in our region. The Mayor's Cup Community Challenge is what brings me here this evening. As you know, each year, by size category of towns and cities throughout Silicon Valley, five different categories to compete for the Mayor's Cup, which I think would look great in the town lobby. And we are expanding it a bit this year by the request of council members from throughout the region, not solely to be based on the points of each of you registering for the race, along with Town Manager Laurel Prevetti, but also by communications that you make through newsletter or e-newsletter to members of the town, through social media and other ways. And if there is a volunteer on the town council or in the administration that will serve as our key point of contact, that step alone is five additional points towards the Mayor's Cup. And since we all like a healthy competition in a healthy race to help families in need, we do hope you will join us. The first step towards that, of course, is the hope that you will put some posters in the town hall, along with some flyers for people who visit the town. And again, we hope you'll join us on Thanksgiving morning. It's still the best excuse you will have for a third slice of pie on Thanksgiving Day. Thanks for letting me join you this evening.
Okay, thank you.
And Mayor, you're gonna look great in last year's Turkey Trot shirt, so this is for you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
On your Form 700, this is $4.25.
Okay. All right, so next up I have Catherine Summers.
Good evening, council. My name is Catherine Summers with the Los Gatos Chamber of Commerce. I'm sure you're all as excited as I am about this weekend's upcoming Eat, Drink, Los Gatos event. We expect about 5,000 people to attend the event to dine and shop and enjoy our charming historic downtown. We have 14 restaurants participating, 42 wineries, service organizations, service providers. We have three bands and more than 50 volunteers. And while I'm worried that my staff and I may have forgotten something, I am mostly losing sleep about where all these people are going to safely park in a spot where they will not get a parking ticket. Some of my volunteers will be starting as early as 6:00 a.m. and will stay until 11:00 p.m. My staff will be there for those same hours. This year, I even have some senior citizens who have graciously stepped up to help me with the event. Musicians will be bringing their sound equipment and their instruments. It is really hard for me to insist that all of these people park in the unlimited spots, on Miles or in the north lot. For these people, those spots are just too far away. We'd hoped that we might be able to get some volunteer parking passes for the event. Unfortunately, we were told that these are never issued. We offered to pay for a portion of one of the lots for our volunteers and our musicians. We were told that this is not an option either, and that they would just have to do. I was told multiple times that the staff had to do what the council had asked. I bring this to your attention tonight because I think there was a misunderstanding at the council meeting on February 20th. Or maybe it was not a misunderstanding, but I just would like some clarification. On February 20th, a few motions were passed. We were talking about parking, pilot programs, parking consultants, special events, et cetera. All of it is in the meetings on, from February 20th, which I'm sure some of you have seen. Were you aware that you all voted unanimously to enforce all limited time parking on all special event days? Essentially, that means that you voted to make sure that people who came to town for a special event could only park for two or three hours, or they would get a ticket. Volunteers aside, isn't one of your priorities to increase foot traffic and sales tax revenue in town? What better way to do this than to have 5,000 people in downtown enjoying themselves? Most merchants report that these days are their best sales days ever. They come down to a four to seven hour event only to return to their car to have a ticket. I don't know how much you make from ticket revenues that day, but I think we should all be focused on the positive outcome and the return on our investment. What really matters is that all these people leave Los Gatos wanting to come back again. As you know, back in the day, just two wine walks ago in fact, event days were special days. The parking officers were notified that the days were special and why they were still concerned about people who had obvious parking violations, they were not concerned about the time limits. That is the way it should still be today. Many of you have heard the story from Spring Wine Walk. The chamber collected the parking tickets from 27 people. We only took them from volunteers and wineries that day. We appealed all those tickets and some were dismissed, but some were denied. We paid for all of those tickets. So tonight, I'm asking for you to review the motion you passed on February 20th. I don't suppose you can do anything to change what will happen this Saturday, and I'm sure I will have a large bill come Sunday morning. But I'm hoping that you will allow for a discussion at an upcoming policy meeting so that we can really analyze this issue. If you are really serious about wanting to revitalize downtown...
Thank you, we need to wrap up. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Summers? Councilmember Spector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I'm not gonna give you more time to finish your sentence, but I have a question for you. When you talk about Miles Avenue being too far away, do you have in mind that you can just take the walkway that goes straight to Old Town? As opposed to coming up Miles, going to university? You can just walk along the creek and go right to the back of Old Town?
But yeah, but nothing, but it's all on Santa Cruz Avenue, so that actually would be further, or farther. To walk up Miles Avenue, I mean, it's just easier to park down there and just to walk straight up. But they have their instruments, or in some cases, again, I mentioned that, I mean, I had a volunteer meeting last night and I had a few people who are over the age of 65 who will be sitting at my street closures, and they were very concerned about parking. What I'm gonna end up doing is going and picking them up in the morning, or I have volunteers who will go and pick them up so they don't have to worry about parking and then they'll take them home.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Would any member of the council wish to have this on a future agenda item for discussion? Councilmember Sayak.
Actually, I don't have any questions of Ms. Summers, but some of staff, and then if you are raising a question, I would like it to come back for further discussion.
Okay. Do you want a question for staff now?
Yes, specifically if we can get that motion back. But my understanding is that there was also, as part of that discussion, a broader discussion of various pilots. One included having unlimited parking in one of the lots, and so a status on that, so.
So we are working with the chamber on a potential pilot. I believe we're looking at the lot behind Loma Brewing for a test pilot. I don't recall all the parameters. We're still working out the logistics. And we'd like to do that pilot in advance of the parking study, just so we can see how, what we can learn from the pilot. And we could, I think for clarification, if the mayor would like to specify whether you would like this to come first to policy committee, or if you'd like the parking item to come directly to the full council, that would be helpful in agenda management.
Do I need to answer now, or just work it out with you later?
We can work it out, but just for your thoughts.
Okay. Councilmember Jensen.
To the extent that there was a motion, I would like to second that it come back and at the discretion of the mayor, whichever is faster or more productive. Along with Councilwoman Sayak, it's my recollection that we did discuss at that meeting possibly extending and/or not enforcing parking for events. I remember there being a long discussion. I did look at the minutes and I didn't see that reflected, nor did I see it reflected that we voted to specifically enforce parking. So it was my recollection that we had actually discussed what Ms. Summers is bringing up. We acknowledged that there was an issue and that we wanted to pursue ideas to alleviate that problem. I don't know the most efficient way to do it, and I don't know how to do it for this weekend, but that was my recollection of what the discussion was.
Councilmember Spector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since there, there's no clear recollection, and it's not, it may not be whatever we did reflected in the minutes, we still have the opportunity to look at our video and see what happened.
Okay, Vice Mayor Leonardis.
Thank you, Mayor Renney. Question for staff. Could Ms. Summers' organization utilize the Tate Museum parking lot for this event?
Well, with any special event permit, our event organizers are always encouraged to work with private property owners and their parking lots to make alternate parking arrangements. I think we would have to work very quickly to do something for this weekend on town property, but we're open to continuing to work with the chamber on alternate parking arrangements.
Thank you.
Okay, I seem to have a motion on the floor, so if there's no further comment, I'll call the motion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Passes unanimously. I think that's it for you. Thank you, Ms. Summers.
Mayor? Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes, please.
For clarification, who made the motion and who seconded it?
It was made by Marieke, Councilmember Sayak, and seconded by Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you.
Next up, Lee Quintana.
Lee Quintana, Five Palm Avenue. I'm speaking, I'm speaking as a member of the Democracy Tent, a group that's sponsored by the Los Gatos Saratoga Adult Recreation Center. Democracy Tent is hosting two public question and answer candidate forums in the next couple of weeks.
Other way up.
The first forum will be held on September 26th for town council candidates. Will be held at the Youth Recreation Center across from Town Hall from 7:00 p.m. to 9:15 p.m. Four candidates are running for the three council seats, and three of the four candidates have agreed to participate. The second forum is for the Los Gatos Saratoga High School Board candidates. It will be held in the council cha, oops, did I get that right? No. It will be held across the street in the Youth Recreation Center from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. on October the 11th. There are four candidates running for the three positions on the board. All four candidates have agreed to participate. At each forum, candidates will participate separately rather than as a group. Each candidate will have the opportunity to make short opening and closing statements. However, the majority of the time of each candidate, that is allotted to each candidate, will be devoted to questions directly from the audience. We encourage you all to come to these forums and ask the candidates the questions that are important to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Quintana? Seeing none, thank you. Next up is Teri Duryea.
Hi, I'm Teri Duryea.
Hi, I'm Teri Durier. The town prides itself on its transparency and its citizen involvement. I applaud the town's philosophy. I have a simple suggestion to improve this involvement further, which might be helpful in light of the fact there's many openings on town committees. If any of the public has ever tried to download the attachments to the agenda items that are provided to town council by staff, they know how time consuming it is. I looked at just tonight's agenda, and there's two i- two of the items, one has six separate file attachments, and another one has seven file attachments. So just to be able to get access to those is very time consuming. My simple suggestion is if town staff, when they post it, could combine it all into a single PDF file, so we just have to download one file, and we have a record that looks at the entire document. Thank you.
Okay, any questions? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Durier. That's it for the cards I have. Would anybody else wish to address us on an item not on the agenda tonight? Seeing nobody, I will close the verbal communication. And I see that our assistant town attorney is ready to go, so we'll go back to item number seven.
Thank you, sorry. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Lynn Lampros, the deputy town attorney, and I'm here on item seven. It is the town staff's recommendation to adopt the ordinance entitled Animals and Foul. I would like the town council to know that since September 4th, I have had several hours more of meetings with various members of the public, including two who are here today, as well as numerous email exchanges with other members of the public, even including a few who are in support of the ordinance. And I have listened very closely to the concerns. My answer to the members of the public is that there, I believe that this ordinance gives me the enforcement tools that the town needs for a variety of animal-related issues. But I have heard their concerns, and my response to them is that they can be addressed in the administrative application of the ordinance, in the development of a permit, in the development of a registration directory, that I think they know that in good faith. I do not plan to make those steps onerous. But that said, I do stand by the ordinance as written because it contemplates legal problems that are not what they're worried about in their concerns. So I am here to respond to any issues or questions that might come up after you hear from them, and thank you for your time.
Okay, let's start with questions for Ms. Lampros. Seeing none, why don't we go ahead and open the public testimony? I'll start with Sylvia Carrillo.
Good evening, Council. I did not know about this meeting until I emailed our town attorney, and she mentioned that you were going to vote on this again. So a lot of my neighbors were very frustrated as to why we have a second voting on this issue, but it was explained to me that it's California law, and that's how it is. My concerns are the following. One is that I, I do not want people or organizations coming to my neighborhood on town terrace and directing or dictating what should be done. They don't live there. I do, and I've been there for almost 12 years now. And also, the ordinance needs to pass. We, we need that ordinance. I've called Senator Diane Feinstein this morning, and I've called our Senator Jim Beal, state senator, and I explained to them and gave them an earful of what I've been through. And they were taking notes. And I also, we have one lady that lives on our street, I won't mention her name, I think you all know who she is. I just saw her feeding cats while I was on my way over here. And I, I, we need her out of that neighborhood. I was up at 12:30 AM, and there were five skunks coming out of that one particular area and going into our complex right across the street. I want my neighborhood back. I don't even walk anymore in my neighborhood. I really want it back. I miss it. I miss walking in the neighborhood. So, do you have any questions?
Hey, any questions? I think there's none at this time. I think we definitely got the message last time, so thank you for coming back again this time.
Yes, and I also noticed that, I guess you guys must have all seen the pictures. So, my neighbors are taking pictures and videotaping, because we have a big issue there. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up, I'm going to go with Denise Yurati. Maybe I'm closer this time.
Thank you for, um, Mayor Ren, vice mayor, and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on item seven again. In order to respect your time, however, because you heard a lot last time, those of us who have been working with town staff over the fa- fast, last few, few weeks to address what doesn't work for us in the ordinance have planned for only two or three speakers tonight so that they were, we, we may present specific changes to the ordinance that we respectfully ask that you incorporate tonight in passing of this legis- of this legislation. I want to speak first as to why this is important to the rescue community. Section 4.10085E, subpoints A through F, town staff is creating a permitting process that in spirit is attempting to permit feeders, but came out in the language in the ordinance surrounding like it permits rescue groups who are trying to help residents in fixing and feeding and rescuing animals to reduce the cat population. While our preference is to have no permit process at all, because it's been tried in other cities and has not worked, we understand that town staff is trying to set out a permit process to address some certain issues, and we respect that. Therefore, we respectfully ask that language be altered to make it clear that the permitting is referring to feeding activities and not for trapping, fixing, and other work that we do in the community to address the issues that these folks are having. We truly are on their side. I know sometimes it doesn't seem like it, but we really are. Our objective is the same as theirs, to reduce the number of free roaming cats is our objective as well as theirs. In order to do that, we need access. Your residents feed, the community feeds, and most times, we don't know the feeders. The feeders are your residents. The rescue folks are there to help your residents understand that if they feed, they also need to fix. We're there to guide and advise, we're not there to manage. Trappers are giving this advice for hands-on assistance in the cases where they need it, but most of the time, we're only there to advise and, and to show them best practices. We want to make sure if you're feeding, they're not reproducing. The objective, again, is to determine whether or not the area is not, does not have any free roaming, unfixed cats, and we want to manage this so the numbers stabilize and reduce. Reduction will reduce also the need for feeding. Regarding the permitting process, we would just respectfully ask, there's another speaker to talk about specific changes, but that this be a pilot program to ensure that it basically has a desired effect, or some review of that, to see that it's moving in the right direction rather than the wrong. Lastly, I just want to mention, since 2010, we've been doing major outreach, and we've reduced the number of cats and kittens coming to the shelter by 25%. We want to ask that we continue on that trend that involves town, residents, and rescue combined collaboration rather than moving in the opposite direction. Thank you so much.
Okay, any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, thank you. Next up, I have Diana Grubbs.
Mayor, vice mayor, council members. My name is Diana Grubbs, and I've lived in Los Gatos for 19 years. Thank you for your time and attention to this topic once again. I've met extensively with the deputy town attorney over the past few weeks, and I believe there is alignment between the rescue community and the town of Los Gatos. And while we agree on the spirit of the ordinance and do plan to work together as we move forward, we differ in the idea that the wording of the ordinance is important to have clear now and not later. We understand that it is a priority for the town to be responsive to community complaints about inappropriate feeding resulting in attracting wildlife when the feeding of community cats is not conducted according to best practice. To that end, it is our recommendation to replace one section of 4.10085 altogether. The highlighted portion is what we're suggesting to replace. It's a seemingly large section, but it merely refers to the permit process that Denise referred to for feeders. We do have an alternate, if it is important to the town to have a permit process. But our highest recommendation is that we replace this with the following paragraph. This paragraph eliminates the permit profit, process in favor of simple language that offers town staff and code enforcement the tools they need to address situations such as the one at town terrace. Our second change covers the other two sections regarding community cats. Again, you can see several places that we've highlighted, but what this section, what it's doing is it's simply removing the reference to TNR folks. These sections were written to address rescue volunteers in other areas. I want to note that Jim Bell has been a staunch supporter of TNR activities over his years here in the Bay Area, and I've worked with him in the past along the Los Gatos Creek Trail. In closing, I appreciate the opportunity to provide replacement wording for these sections, and I believe these replacements will enable the town to properly cite these feeders who are not following best practice while still attracting the TNR and rescue community to support efforts in Los Gatos. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for this speaker? Okay, seeing none, thank you. Do we have in our packet the suggested paragraph that she gave? Maybe, maybe you could leave that up here in case any council member wishes to refer to it. We can have assistant town manager put it up later if, if asked.
I will leave two copies.
Thank you. Okay, I have no more, no more speaker cards on this item. Would any member of the public wish to address us on this item? Seeing none, I will close the verbal testimony, come back to council for questions and motions. Councilmember Saak.
So Ms. Lampros, the language that was presented during public hearing, is this language that you yourself saw?
Yes, I did see it.
Okay. And no further comments to the suggestions?
I, I don't think the suggestions to 4.10085 are meritorious because it takes away the permit requirement entirely, and I believe that the permit requirement is important to help us regulate the, the improper behavior. It, I understand that the community thinks that if you simply put out some guidelines and say feeding feral cats should be done in the following good manner, then I can nab anybody who does it in the bad manner. But the fact of the matter is that proof issues in, in enforcement, in an administrative hearing, or a civil lawsuit for injunctive relief, or a criminal prosecution are difficult to overcome with vague language. And it is a much better tool for enforcement if I have the absence of a permit because this person didn't get it, couldn't get it. And so I have stronger language and stronger requirements because the town attorney's office knows what it takes to prove something up in court.
Okay, any, any further questions? Maybe let me ask a couple questions. So you, you're, you don't want to get rid of the permitting requirement for the TNR people. Is, my impression was there isn't a permit required for just the average person that wants to feed, but they do have to still follow proper feeding guidelines. Is that correct?
Not quite. So again, on private property, anybody can feed with, the private property of the owner, anybody can feed without a permit, and for any reason. Not just for TNR, but because they like to take care of the cats. Ms. Yurati actually proposed a harsher ordinance in a way, in that to require that those people must trap and neuter, but that, that, this ordinance is a little bit looser. With regard to the private property owned by someone else, you know, a safe way, a friend's house, a duplex you live in, an apartment complex, again, a private person can feed unrestrictedly with the consent of the property owner. And in the case of multifamily housing, with the consent of all the residents. Now, that is a smaller burden when it's like a duplex, and a bigger burden, I realize, when it's an apartment complex. And there could be situations where you can't get consent. And so for that reason, we have this end run exception where if for public property or for private property without consent, you can go to the town and request a permit. What is envisioned by that is that you have responsible feeder, responsible organization who says, we have a problem out there, and we need to address it, and we can't get consent. And so if the town can work with this per- person, partner with this person, we can allow the feeding in a regulated way. This prevents a problem that I've been hearing from, which is that some legitimate feeders have been going out to our neighborhoods and getting run off by angry residents. Because now, these angry residents just see everybody as the problem. So I think this ordinance extends a measure of protection to the good feeder, and I envision, the town attorney's office envisions, that we would do outreach, that we would, I would contact the, the apartment complex manager and say, we have a legitimate person here. Let's put up a flyer. Let's inform your residents. This person is sanctioned. They're, they're attacking a known problem. We want to help them do that. You know, there's just too much bad blood now over there. The good needs help as much as the bad needs, we need to help the bad, weed out the bad. So this permit process is important, but it doesn't, it, it's not, it's not as, I don't think as onerous as, as you said. It's, it's, there's a lot that can be done to extend a permit in a situation to fix the problem. But it, it's a little bit of a hurdle for someone as opposed to just being able to do it with no rules and regulations. However, when you have a problem, you need some rules and regulations to rein it in.
So just to be clear, if I were Tom Albanese, I could invite some TNR people to come over to Campu de Bachi and feed there, and they wouldn't need a permit.
That's correct.
And if, for some reason, they were not really capable, TNR people, they were doing it wrong, we, the town, could then come in and tell them to cease and desist, or clean up their act or something.
Well, I think once a property owner sees a problem and, and withdraws consent, then they know, now they're trespassing. So, you know, I was interested that in one of my conversations with Ms. Yurati, she volunteered that on public property, responsible feeders should get encroachment permits. On private property, there are private property rights, they should get consent. We were a little bit in a different mindset about how to achieve that, but she was very responsible and reasonable in noting some parameters. So, yeah, I think a property owner could withdraw consent if it's a problem, but, and then, and then it would become an enforcement action for us. But again, this is, you know, this is one of many of their issues, but I think that the, the management of this problem can be thoughtfully done in application. And, you know, we can try to overcome some of what they perceive to be the bigger hurdles to their, to their activity.
So if I could follow on your thought there, so in, you know, in application, if you leave the town and somebody else is doing the enforcement, how do we know they are, now have all your wisdom and doing it in application correctly?
That's a good question, and of course, it was posed by the members of the community. And my response to it is that when we draft permits, and I worked on a sample permit with Ms. Grubbs, when we draft permits and we draft registration documents, or flyers, or links on the website, those documents become practice. or links on the website, those documents become practice, and they outlive me. Now, if, you know, certainly, we operate in the town on policy and practice as well as letter of the law. If, however, because I'm not there anymore, or simply because the, it reveals itself that this ordinance has created problems that it didn't used to be there, or whatever the application changes and now it's a problem, of course, the ordinance can be reopened. If in six months or a year, somebody says, "Look at this, we have 8,000 new feral cats because of you, Lynn," then the ordinance can be looked at again.
Okay, any other questions? Councilmember Jensen.
It's not a question. Can I try a motion?
Yes.
My motion is to adopt the ordinance that was introduced at the town council meeting of September 4th, 2018, without any changes. I'd put in an explanation and a reminder to those in the audience in the council is that this is a comprehensive ordinance that's addressing lots of things besides cats, and what we need to do is keep that in mind, and we are trying to address, for example, vicious dogs. And once we put a process in place, it should not be burdensome for those people who are responsible, and it gives the town a mechanism to try to regulate it in a way that is fair, based upon ordinance language, those who are not responsible.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second from the Vice Mayor. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Passes unanimously. And we need a second reading? No? Well, we need to read the first time? Okay. Get to close this one permanently? All right, so on to item number eight. Yeah, item number eight, school busing pilot program.
Good evening. Ying Smith, Transportation and Mobility Manager. So we're here tonight to present to you the plan to implement the school bus pilot program, and along with the staff recommendations. So just want to refresh what we all agree on, the goal of this program is to reduce traffic congestion near schools. So you're at the meeting back in June 5th, and you gave us a direction in the following three specific items. One, the service model should be a yellow school bus model, and second, we're going to require annual subscription, and third, a fare structure is such as $350 per year, and for the first six months, it's going to be $180. So here are just the high-level conclusions from the work we did since the June 5th meeting. We went through a customer sign-up process, and we had received sufficient demand for two routes, they're near capacity, and the cost turned out to be higher than originally estimated, and the fare revenue will be slightly lower. So those changes would trigger some budget adjustments, and we'll get to that later in my presentation. We also completed the selection of a transportation provider through a Request for Proposal Service process, and it's called Student Transportation of America, short for STA. This company meets all the federal and state requirements for providing student transportation services. They are going to provide vehicles three years or newer at the start of the service. They do have a focus on student safety with a rigorous performance in program in driver training as well as vehicle maintenance. I just want to mention that this effort from the very beginning has been supported by strong partnership with the two school districts, our Safe Route to School Coalition, as well as our town's own Transportation and Parking Commission, against staff, which is to express our appreciation for their support and their work, actually, a lot of hands-on support for us. So want to give you a summary of the sign-up. You have seen the numbers. We have received a total of 150 sign-ups, and just want to explain those, the service. We developed a draft service plan, which includes the route, design, schedules, and bus stop locations. The work is based on the surveys where the parents express their interest and also provide the home, actual home addresses. So we designed three routes. Route A serves Fisher Middle School as well as Blossom Hill Elementary, and we cover the area in Montessorano as well as north Los Gatos. Route B is the route that comes from Los Gatos Mountains, and it will serve both Los Gatos High as well as Fisher. And since this is the only mountain route proposed, we have learned in the process that the route has served both middle and high school for it to be a solution for the families. We do see in this route that many families sign up with multiple children, and even quite a surprise, we got some sign-ups from the Lexington Elementary School. So Route C serves only Los Gatos High, and it will cover the north and east side of Los Gatos. So this is the, kind of the highlight of what we learned in, at the end of the process. So as predicted, we were able to get very high demand for two routes, and they're close to capacity. So we're looking at a service that has a very high ridership performance, but it does come in a high cost, so this, that leads to the next topic, which is the revenue and expenditure. The table on the PowerPoint is the same as Table 2 in the council report. The figures have been updated from the June meeting from the adopted budget, and this is based on the actual cost proposal from the service provider as well as the fare revenue. So the, I understand there are a lot of tables we put in the report to you, but the simplest way to explain all the changes is we are recommending to take the budget from year three to put into year one. Basically, instead of looking at the three-year service, we're looking at an 18-month service. So we're not requesting additional general fund budget, it's adjustment to move the budget from year three to the early years. So the details are in the council report. So if the council pulls the staff recommendations tonight, there, those are the upcoming events lead to the January 7 service start. In this month, we'll finalize the service plan, and in October, we'll finish the online payment. And our recommenda, our recommendation is Route A and B, and we also, by the end of the year, we'll have to confirm with all the customer payments as well as the issued bus passes. So the first day of service is January 7, 2019. Beyond January, well, by before the end of the year, we'll come back with additional information for your consideration. First is the business plan. We have provided some information in the council report. The business plan will give us the five-year outlook of this program, and it will also include performance metrics, and will also include discussions on adjusting the fare structure as well as strategies in pursuing a sustainable cost sharing structure. So in conclusion, the recommending, recommendation from staff in order to start the pilot service in January is to approve the implementation plan that includes Route A and B, and authorize a service contract with STA, the service provider, and also authorize the budget adjustments. So that concludes my presentation.
Questions? Councilmember Sack.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. So first, I wanted to, I want to thank you and staff for bringing this to fruition. This is something we've talked about for many years, and so it's exciting to get to this point. So I just wanted to get a couple of clarifications. So when you say customers, is that a student, or is that a family? So if I'm looking at Route A, is that taking 49 families?
Students.
Students, okay. And so there may, there may be several student, two or three possibly from one address, so it's not necessarily taking 49 cars off?
So the actual family count is about 125, so no, it's not necessarily one-to-one.
Okay.
But they do make two trips a day.
Absolutely, absolutely. My second question to you, and it makes sense, the proposed suggestion for reallocating the year-three funds. In your conversations, you note that you've had a conversation with County Supervisor Wasserman about possible subsidies, but they're not in a capacity to do it this fiscal year. Was there any opportunities from that conversation for future funding, and that if we were able to take away year three, we're doing it with the intent of looking for future funding from the county to help offset year three?
So Matt Morley, Director of Parks and Public Works, thank you for the question. Yeah, we would expect that in, if the program continues into future years, that we'd want to continue to look for alternative funding sources, including through partners with the county if it's successful, especially given the ridership there, and hopefully at some point through a Measure B solution as well. Those are things that are out in the future. We've seen, we struggled a little bit with the grants for this particular program, so we don't want to get our hopes up too much on that side of things, but that is our intent.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Specter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Ms. Smith, thank you very much. I understand from your staff report why the cost is higher, but I think you also said that the revenue is lower. Did you say that, and if so, why is that?
Okay, yes, very good question. So two pieces to it. The cost increase mostly from the service itself. So this, we, the original budget was based on the information we receive from peer agencies, peer agency being Traffic's. There's another one, it's La Marina. But they're actually on the same boat with us, unfortunately, they are facing this kind of cost increase. So that's the most of the, where the cost came from. The fare revenue decrease is actually very, very small in just, in a few thousand dollars per year. The most revenue that we had to make the adjustment is because we're not successful in getting TFCA, this TFCA grant, and that was explained at the June meeting, but we didn't do the budget adjustment at the time.
All right, thank you. And I believe that you may have actually, in that answer, answered my next question, which is, I was anticipating that the town and the council would be looking at, I think you called them peer agencies, in order to determine what our costs and revenues might be, and I was, people always talk about Danville. But is your answer to that, that we can't necessarily use Danville, or if we use Danville or something like that, their costs are also increasing?
We definitely, that's a very good peer agency comparison. They are facing exactly the same challenge we have, and that is the trend in the industry. So we are, it's good, we need to do the comparisons, we're not being the one paying the highest rate, and we're not. I guess the bad news is the cost is such a way that not like we can get a better rate than what we have now.
Thank you.
If I could elaborate on that just briefly. So what we are seeing across all of the peer agencies is an increase in costs over the, starting this year, that is fairly substantial, and has been a little bit shocking to those organizations as they've continued to look at their programs. So we anticipate increased costs from our perspective. We didn't want to shortchange the cost conversation tonight because it is an expensive program, and we know the council has many priorities for funds, so we wanted you to have a clear understanding that we have a funding solution for the pilot program, and we potentially need alternative funding solutions for the future.
Go ahead and follow up.
Thank you. With regard to the, what you call peer agencies, I call Danville, are they charging their family, or their students, the same amount?
We are in the lower end, so if we use the concept of how, what is the percentage of the fare revenue as a total revenue? We show that in our staff report, we're at 14%, and our other agencies are at 20% and 33%. So our fare is lower, and our, the percentage, the fare account for the total revenue is also relatively low.
And to me, that would make sense, since we're just starting. When you come back to us, may we have included in your report the differences from the other peer agencies and what that would mean to us if we met them?
Yes, definitely, we'll provide the information.
Thank you.
I think I saw Councilmember Jensen's hand up next.
Thank you, Mayor. Two questions on funding. The first was to make sure that, my understanding is correct, Danville has a tax for this service, correct, that they imposed on themselves? We do not.
Yes, that's the measure, JN, is a dedicated funding source.
Right, okay. The second question is the TFCA grant, and I don't remember what that stands for, Traffic Something Something? What does it stand for?
Transportation for Clean Air.
Oh, there you go, okay. And the Metropolitan Transportation Commission found us to be ineligible, and what I want to figure out is, the staff report says we can't count on any kind of grant funding from them. Does their determination preclude us from applying for and receiving funds from Measure B when those funds become available?
The TFCA fund is very, very different from Measure B, so the fact that we were not eligible under the current program structure has no impact on Measure B. And I do want to, since we're on the TFCA topic, there is possible the air district may change its own program in the future, but of course, not at the present time.
Okay, so I assume that the town is on track to look at funding potential from Measure B when that becomes available?
So with respect to Measure B, we've already put sort of the bug in the ear of VTA that we're intending on putting forward a successful project for our school busing. That is sort of been our stance with VTA. There's been slight pushback from VTA on that, that the funds are competitive, so there'll be other folks that are looking to compete for those funds. I think VTA might like us to utilize some of the funds that we have set aside and, or we have identified in the highways program, which is where the broad language for the town is located, that could provide some potential future challenges for funding of our other projects that we wanted to take on, including Highway 17. So there's a lot of work to do on the funding side in order to secure something that can help this project continue from an ongoing perspective.
Maybe I could follow up a question on that. So which bucket from Measure B? I had thought we were talking about the streets fund, which we couldn't really access until we got our PCI to 70. Is there a different bucket that you were trying to convince them of?
There's an innovative transit element from Measure B, and that's really where we think is the most appropriate place. But there are other agencies that run different busing services. VTA themselves has some ideas on how they would like to use the funds, so there's definitely challenges there on, lots of folks wanting to dip into a small amount of money.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Sack.
So just a quick question, three questions. The first, since we're on Measure B, it's my understanding that this is something that we've always raised as a potential idea, even before Measure B was passed, so I want to confirm that?
That is correct.
Okay. And the second question with regards to the TFCA, why we were determined ineligible? Were there specific factors given, and is there an ability to, for us to do something different so that we could meet that eligibility?
Well, I think we are, I think the more accurate way to say that, we're only eligible for a few thousand dollars because the benefits of reducing automobile travel. And town staff and air district staff didn't agree on the methodology, and of course, they do make the final determination, and at the same time, the program criteria are set in such a way that it's not beneficial, not to our advantage. We are successful in getting some bicycle money, so if one day the program in that category, the criteria get changed in such a way that we may be eligible for a more meaningful amount.
If I may, two more questions. Peer agencies, Hillbrook's busing model may be completely different, but are you, do you know how much they charge, or is this a complimentary service to their students?
Actually, we are, the service contractor is the same as Hillbrook, and they charge about 350 to 550, depending on the distance. It is heavily subsidized by the school.
And then my last question is, because we are starting this- And then my last question is, because we are starting this, is it, based on your conversations with the, with the busing company, is this something that we could scale, so that should we prove its success and gain more ridership, that we could ultimately defray some of these costs, so that it would be less subsidies on the town part? Or is it, these are fixed costs per bus?
Okay, the cost structure is per day of service, per bus. So the more students we can pack in a bus, the more revenue we receive. It would be asked the question, if we get, grow bigger, if we double our size, four buses, six, and all that, would we see a per route cost decrease? They said there's no guarantee, it all goes back to some really complicated formula they have, because they still have to pay the drivers, they still have to maintain the vehicles. So there's no guarantee that, traffic, for example, the Danville model, they run twenty-three buses. Now, their current quote they receive is higher than ours.
Okay, let me ask my question then. When I look at Route C, which you're recommending not to do at this point, I see a double effect, because it looks like it's all high school students, and we potentially get cars off the street, but we also potentially help a parking problem. So I'm wondering if you have any data on those thirty-seven that were signed up for C? Are they freshmen and sophomores that don't drive, or some of them actually might be removing potential parking?
We didn't collect the data on the grade of the students, and we didn't, we kept the process pretty straightforward.
And you decided not to go with C because thirty-seven just isn't quite enough to do the route?
Your direction from last time was to have budget for two routes. And so we, and that also direction is the two with the highest ridership are the ones to make it happen. So it happened. It's a very good number, thirty-seven is a good number, but not quite high as the other two.
Go ahead, Director Morley.
So a couple of things. One, to the pricing, it's not scalable, so adding another route is halving in as much as the cost that we're currently looking at. So it's a significant cost increase. So we want to be responsible with that through the pilot, especially as we're learning, that we start with something that we can control and that we can handle. The other thing that we've talked about is that having excessive, having excess demand for the service is probably a good thing, so that will continue the conversation, and hopefully boost ridership in the future. One of the best ways of keeping the costs down is by keeping those buses full. And so if we have demand where it's something, you know, the typical thing where it's something that somebody can't have, it becomes more valuable, we induce a little bit of demand there, and so the future into year three, year two and three would have that extra demand pushed behind it.
Okay. Seeing no other questions at this time, I will open the public testimony. I have no cards. I see the clerk has no cards. Would any member of the public wish to comment on this item at this time? Seeing nobody rushing forward, I will close the public testimony and come back to council for a motion or discussion. I think I saw Councilmember Specter first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is going to be a motion. First of all, I want to thank staff once again, and I know what our goals are up here, so this will just be the first step toward that goal. I'm going to move to, one, approve the school bus pilot program implementation plan. Two, authorize the town manager to negotiate and execute an agreement for student transportation services with Santa Barbara Transportation Corp., doing business as Student Transportation of America, a California corporation, in an amount not to exceed three hundred twenty-eight thousand, one hundred eighty-nine dollars in fiscal years eighteen nineteen and nineteen twenty. Three, authorize expenditure budget adjustments in the fiscal year eighteen nineteen pilot school busing program. Two, advance funding from fiscal years nineteen twenty and twenty-one twenty-two, in the amount of four hundred eleven thousand, ninety dollars, and authorize decrease in fare and grant revenue by a three-year total of two hundred twenty thousand, five hundred ninety dollars in fiscal year eighteen nineteen, sixty-four thousand, five hundred in fiscal year nineteen twenty, and a hundred and twenty-three thousand in fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty-one. And I hope I get a second.
I'll second the motion.
Second, okay. Do I have any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, I'll call the question. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Smith. All right, so now we are on to item number nine, which is to review the town's preliminary total operating cash position as of June thirty, twenty eighteen.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Steve Conway, Director of Finance. Pleasure to be here tonight. Tonight, you have before you the preliminary cash position that we believe, for the most part, should be our final numbers. They're pre-audits, so we haven't finalized our audit. Our actual year-end audit, auditors are coming next Monday, as a matter of fact. So these numbers that you have on your staff report are pre-final audit. However, we did want to use the most recent numbers that we had available, which were our June thirty eighteen cash balances. There had been some interest expressed in taking a look at those, understanding those a little better from the council, so we wanted to follow up with the full council, some of the information that we had presented in early August to the Finance Committee. And so tonight, we're going to be doing that. And I just would like to ask the mayor, would you like, would you, I have a bit of a presentation, I'm, I'll try to keep it at a, keep it moving, but would the council prefer to ask me questions during my presentation, or wait until I'm finished? I'm happy to do either one.
I think I heard one vote for after. Two of us have already seen your presentation and are very familiar, and so maybe we'll go through the whole thing.
Okay. So as I mentioned, these are pre-final audit numbers, but, so I'm going to focus very, at a very high level, by fund types. So if we can go to this first slide, and I realize for the public it's a little hard to read that, but basically, this is a, an organization chart of our five principal fund types that the town keeps, our five principal checkbooks. Far left is general fund, special revenue funds, our capital projects funds, our internal service funds, and our trust funds. All of those funds are called fund types, basically different types of checkbooks, and they sum to a total of seventy-six point seven million dollars as of June thirty in cash. And I'm going to be going into each of those. I'm going to focus mostly on the general fund and on the capital projects, I mean, excuse me, the internal service funds, because the special revenue funds and the capital projects funds are pretty much checkbooks where the money is deposited, and in the case of capital projects, it's money for approved projects. It really is a holding spot until the project activity is done. And in the case of special revenue funds, there are funds such as our gas tax fund, where we just hold money as a funding source to use for capital projects, and it can only be used for street infrastructure in the, in the, excuse me, in the case of gas tax. So this chart basically breaks out that seventy-six point seven million and into its primary buckets. There's thirty-eight point four million of general fund, twenty-five million of capital projects, one hundred thousand of special revenue cash, ten point seven million in the internal service funds, and then we also have what we call fiduciary trust funds. That's typically our library trust funds and our RDA successor agency monies that come in to pay our COP debt service. That's another two point two million. Looking first at the general fund, we have about thirty-eight point four million in general fund in cash as of June thirty. There is an obligation against that thirty-eight point four. There's eight point four million of deposits and liabilities, accounts payable, things that we owe, that cash isn't all our cash. Some of it, we have to refund back to developers, some of it's for accounts payable that we owe as of June thirty. So we're roughly left with about thirty million. And the simple accounting equation, and we have some high school students, assets minus liabilities equals your fund balance, equals your reserves. So we have our assets cash, we have our liabilities of eight point four million, and we leave ourselves with about thirty million dollars. The bulk of that thirty million dollar reserves is in some reserves that we have, either as assigned or committed reserves, based on council resolution. So there are specific, council authorized uses for each of these reserves. We have two of them, the budget stabilization and catastrophic, that adds up to about ten million dollars. That is a twenty-five percent reserve of our operating funds. That provides three months of cash in case of a, in case of an unforeseen event. We would have three months of cash available to run our operations. The capital reserve is already programmed out, seven point nine million. That's already been in our five-year capital program. We, staff takes our recommendations forward to council, and we, over a five-year period, utilize that money to fund our capital program. We've got three point two million as of June in our pension, OPEB. That's the new reserve council established quite proactively and wisely. That will likely increase to around four million by, within the end of this current fiscal year. We expect that that balance will grow to four million dollars. And then there's some other reserves. One I want to point out, we also fully reserve our accrued vacation and sick leave. So we have two point eight million dollars of cash to pay and set aside for all of the accrued vacation and sick leave that employees have earned, that's entitled to them should they depart that service from the town. All of that money has been set aside. There's an additional five point two million right now, that per our current adopted general fund reserve policy, will, by the way it works, we, council has a resolution, so per our reserve fund policy that was in effect as of June thirtieth of two thousand eighteen, that five, approximately five million dollars will be allocated according to the approved general fund reserve policy. That means that the bulk of that money will, when we do our June thirty eighteen CAFR, will go into the reserve for capital improvements. However, none of that money will be spent. None of it's been programmed into the CIP. It's not been put, allocated to any specific project. So it is, it is, it's going to be put in that reserve, in that reserve, in that assigned reserve when we do the final close, but it has not been allocated or appropriated by council, and it will, and it can only be done by council. So that money, I wanted to stress that, because we may, I'll get to this in a little while, but we have a staff recommendation about what we can do about that, approximately five million dollars when we, when we close, final close the year and approve our CAFR. The, as I said, I was going to not go into these capital projects and internal service. I want to go right to the internal service funds. That is a fund that has approximately ten point seven million dollars across all of our, all of our services in cash. Cash balances in this, in the internal service funds really are there to support the town operations. Examples of that are our workers' comp claims, our general liability claims we pay out when someone sues the town. We have our IT services, all of our information technology services are funded in that internal service fund, and that includes any new IT technology that we buy, and new initiatives we make on the IT world. Our equipment replacements, all of our fleet, all the, all the equipment that we buy, we accumulate funds in those internal service funds to make those scheduled replacements. We also run all of our vehicle and facilities maintenance through an internal service fund. So this building that we're in right now is paid, is maintained through a facilities internal service fund, and the vehicles that we see in our public safety, our squad cars that are out on the streets, those are provided for with our vehicle maintenance internal service fund. So these funds receive services, or receive cash for services performed for the various departments. For instance, the equipment replacement fund charges its user departments an annual fee that, over a period of time, will accumulate cash to be available to replace the equipment when the equipment has reached the end of its useful life. Similar to, you know, a person paying oneself a monthly set aside every month, you may say, you know, I've got a great car, but in six or seven years from now, I'm going to be down at the car lot looking for a brand new one. We do that similar thing with the town. We put money aside, and we say, we have a squad car, we know it's brand new now, but in four to five years, it's going to need replacement. So we, we charge a charge to the police department, and over a four or five-year period, there's enough set aside in that fund, so that when it's time to buy the new equipment, we have the money in hand. The fiduciary funds, I said, but I was very quickly, principally, that's our library trust and our RDA monies that we use to pay our debt service. I'm also pleased to say that we also, council has established, and has since two thousand oh nine, and then more recently with our PARs, Section one fifteen trust, established two external trusts. These monies are not even included in the seventy-six million. These are separate monies, but they are in external trusts. We have sixteen point five million in our California Employees Retirement Benefits Trust. That funds our OPEB, and I think Mr. Bartel recently said he expects we'll be at about a sixty-five percent funded percentage in terms of our unfunded OPEB liabilities, which is excellent. And we also have a million, too, in our PARs Pension, Section one fifteen trust, and we expect that that will grow to the, we're putting three hundred thousand a month in that, and that should grow to two point four million by the end of this fiscal year. So those are not even included in the seventy-six million, but I wanted to give council an update on, an update on that. I have one other thing I'd like to just quickly look at. This was a comparison of, what we did was, we said, well, you know, we've had questions about the levels of cash that we hold, and even though, you know, as my wife said, how can, you know, how can it be that it's a problem to have too much cash, but that being put aside, cash balances are very important, as any entity needs adequate cash balances, and so that, I think that is very important. But we do have a comparison here of our Santa Clara County cities, and what we did is we took the June thirty statement of net assets and looked at all the cash available for operations. And just to get us a ballpark of where Los Gatos stands in that, with our seventy, at the time last year, seventy-three million in cash, we had an average per capita of about twenty-three hundred dollars in cash. And this is invested at less than two percent because of, California has pretty strict laws about how monies are invested. But you can see that, you know, from a high of seven thousand per capita in Palo Alto, we, we're not, we're right about at the middle. The lowest, the city with the lowest amount of cash is Saratoga, but they're a very low service city. They do not, have not, have never had a history of having a lot of cash, and that's not surprising. Campbell, I know from talking to their finance director, they, during the recession, used about twelve million dollars of their reserves to weather the recession. The town, because of our strong property tax, didn't have to do that. So we have maintained our reserve levels very strong. So we have, we tend to be a little bit better, you know, a better cash position than some of our neighbors. But we're right in the ballpark. I just wanted to give a little perspective in terms of the cash balances that the town holds. You can see Los Altos is very similar to the town, similar in cash balance, and very similar in population, also very similar in the type of services. Los Altos has a public safety department, a police department. I don't believe it has fires. It has a contract fire, like, we don't have contract, but we, they have a fire services provided by the county, central fire districts, as does the town. So this is a very similar organization. So that was just more to get a perspective on that. And I would like to close with just some things that staff recommends. We, as I mentioned, have a final audit that's going to be starting next week, and we expect, this is an early one, we're trying our best to get all the numbers finalized and done, and ready for the final audit. And we are hoping that we will be able to finalize our CAFR for June eighteen in the December eighteen timeframe. At that time, when the CAFR is finalized, we will then be able to confirm all the available general fund reserves, including the approximately five million I mentioned earlier. That's, that has not been spent or allocated or appropriated to any project or anything. It hasn't been obligated or committed. So that money will be, I will call it, on the table. It would then be staff's recommendation that we go in January of two thousand nineteen and determine if the council wishes to reprioritize the CAFR, the June, the balances as shown in the CAFR, those reserve allocations, with the special emphasis on the approximately, you know, four, four to five million dollars placed by the general fund policy in the reserve for capital. And we would recommend that we move that and agendize that as part of your strategic priorities. priorities session that council's planning for January 2019. We'll have final numbers and be ready to address any reprioritization that council might wish to, to look at, at that time.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Let me ask you in, in a little while, I want to ask a question that would, if you could produce it, maybe you can be looking for when you have a chance, the graph that shows our pension payments growing, you know, for like the next 15 years and then starting to drop off. I'd like to make comments to that later on if you're able to pull that up, if you have time to find it.
Mr. Mayor, I do not, I do not have that material with me, but I don't know, maybe our assistant town manager can, can find it.
Okay, so I'm not gonna ask the question right now, I'm just kinda giving pre-warning that that would be great if we had that, that graph. Would anybody wish to ask a question before Councilmember Sack?
So I, I have a couple of questions and I'll reserve the rest since I know we still have public hearing. So I'm gonna start with the last table that you provided, which is the comparison of municipalities.
Yes.
And that's very helpful, so I appreciate you providing that. I'm wondering if you've done further analysis using the same chart, but then adding in the debt and the liabilities for each of these cities? Cause, cause it's helpful for me to see, yes, it's a good thing to have reserves, but I think the question isn't how much reserves do we have? How much can we utilize in it for different, for different pots of money? Am I asking that clearly?
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember Sack. Yes, we did, we did do that. We, we, as part of our look at that, we wanted to see what were the unfunded liabilities and we do have that, it's just not part of this, but we did do that and we can provide that at a later date.
Okay.
But we do have it. Cause we, we pulled that information too. I can just say generally that almost all of the cities have sizable unfunded pension liabilities. Los Gatos is not unique. We tend to be a little on the higher side of it in terms of our population because we're what's called, and John Bartel mentioned this to the full council, we are a mature plan. The town's been incorporated since 1898. Some of our neighboring cities have been incorporated for less years, so they didn't have as many legacy employees. So that's a large part of what drives cost, but we do have that information.
Thank you.
Okay, any, Councilmember Jensen?
This is actually a request for when you come back, whenever you're coming, November, December, January. It's my understanding that there's something called the Government Finance Officers Association that has figured out how you should assess risk for funds and how you should allocate reserve funds. And one of the things is that you should have a minimum of two months in reserve for your operations, et cetera. Are you familiar with what I'm talking about?
Yes, I am.
Okay. I think it would be really helpful for the council to have those standards because there's a pretty set analysis that they seem to go through on how they assess what you should have. So for, for example, I looked at a report they did for the City of Colorado Springs where they went through an entire analysis of what kind of risks they were facing, sales tax volatility, property tax, how they were getting their income, what kind of things do they face? For example, there was a huge wildfire in 2012. What should they do? When does the FEMA money come? When does it not come? And they went through and they, it just so happened that after the GFOA went through this analysis, they had a 12.5% budget stabilization reserve and a 12.5% catastrophic reserve. So that's kind of interesting, but it was 16% to whatever percent. But what we have here is, the numbers are great, but we don't have the analysis that goes behind that number to support why the choices the council made, were made. So I'm just saying for what you're talking about, our future meeting, I would hope that we would get that kind of information.
Thank you, Councilmember Jensen. Yes, we can do that. I would just like to say that when we established our three-month, when we, this is probably five, six, seven years ago, we were working with the two-month, you know, the minimum. We actually called Chicago GFOA headquarters and they had told us they were working with the project base, it's called Risk Assessment for the, I believe the Colorado Springs city that you're referring to, that's called a risk-based approach to it, a risk assessment. And when we visited, they asked us, well, do you have any significant hazards, you know, in Los Gatos? And I mentioned, well, we're about seven miles from the San Andreas Fault and a few other, and also a beautiful valley, but we're in near a forest. And so they thought, they did say, well, you know, two months is the minimum. So we as staff, we recommended three months level, but it was, it wasn't real, I won't say that was scientific, but we can certainly add more to that and describe more what our thoughts were on that.
I'd appreciate that and whatever kind of analysis you did receive, if it was formal, that would be appreciated too.
Thank you.
Okay, there's no more questions at this time. I'm gonna open the public testimony. I have no cards. I see the clerk has no cards. Does anybody from the public wish to address us on this item? No, so I will close the public testimony and come back to council for more questions or comments. Maybe I will start then. If Mr. Andrews has the graph I'm looking for, I think it came from our, our actuarial consultant. So the reason, the reason this agenda item is, is on our, on our agenda tonight is we've had members of the public saying, you know, we need to find ways to make better use of our money, earning less than 2% is not, not very good. And the, I was actually hoping for the longer-term graph, but that, that starts it anyway. There we go, that's the one I was interested in. So the, the issue is, and the reason we're worried about, how do we, how do we do more with, with our money? And is, you know, we've got all this cash, is some of it available to pull out and invest at a higher rate? And for those that might be listening for the first time, we have opened our 115 fund and we have started investing for pension only, but at a higher rate, six, six and a half, whatever, whatever that target is. But the question is, can we get more money? And this, the reason I asked for this graph to come up is this tells the story. So we're way over on the left and this shows our increase in pension payments and a lot of it is related to, you know, unfunded pensions growing and those, the, the payments for those, the unfunded portion growing. Our regular pension funding actually is relatively flat. It's the unfunded portion that creates this, this curve. And so what you see is it's growing kind of quickly in the future, leveling out, and then at some point out in the future, it, it starts dropping off. So the idea that I have, want to introduce, that I've introduced at the Finance Committee is what, what the, I believe the town, town finance department probably would like is some budget stability. So with these quickly rising costs, it, it creates some budget angst. How do we, how do we pay for these, these rising costs that we see in the future? We know our income's not growing this fast. So one of the, and we've started putting money in this 115 fund. So the question is, what do we do with this money we're putting in the 115 fund? And the, the idea that I've been saying is, if we can build the fund up to some level, of which I would ask you to figure out what that level should be, that when, when this curve starts to get uncomfortable and maybe that, you'll see on the curve, we're below 30%, maybe you say at 30% or at 32%, it starts to get uncomfortable for our budget, we start drawing money out of our 115 fund to keep our payment from our general fund. So there would be general fund payment plus something from our 115 to pay this off so that our general fund payments stay at whatever, 30, 32, whatever you think is a comfortable number. And it creates some budget certainty for us that way. And that we would, we would want the 115 fund to be large enough that, you know, ideally the, in the beginning, before it gets too large, we're just using interest. We're not even getting towards the principal. So if you had 10 million or 15 million, whatever the number is, you don't actually start pulling it down until you get towards the top of the hump because you know, in a few years, it's actually gonna be going down and we, we don't need that fund once you get on the backside of this curve. So this is an idea I've been championing. My request would be if you could make some comments about this idea so that the council members that haven't heard it yet have more opportunity to hear the discussion.
Yes, I believe John Bartel, Bartel Associates also discussed this, this, this issue, but this is basically having an agency determine what's a, what's a, what's a employer contribution rate that we believe we can sustain. So let's say it's 35%. In years when the, to fund the unfunded payments, when the rate goes above that, we budget the 35, but we, and let's say it goes to 38% of payroll. We budget and have resources to pay the 35% level, but that additional 3% cost would be picked up through our Section 115 Trust. That's one, one alternative. If we had the funds available in our PARs Trust, we would then supplement our budget and pull from that during those years when we're seeing that escalation, the climb-up of costs, as the mayor pointed in that, that was a great graph to see how that, our actuaries are projecting that our costs will increase over time and then start to level off and drop. So that makes a lot of sense. And the only other alternative to that is you could pay, you could pay CalPERS and pay down the liability, which would also drop the cost. That's just a decision council has to be comfortable with, with because we've, the Finance Committee really hasn't recommended that yet. So, but either one, I think either of those accomplishes.
If I could make a comment on your last part, what I see, the disadvantage to putting it in CalPERS is you drop, can we go back to the other curve? You, you drop the curve all the way back at the same time. So just imagine drawing the same shaped curve, but a little bit below it.
A little bit.
Well, what you're doing is you're also dropping the cost in the later years when we don't need it dropped. The advantage to keeping it in the 115 fund and not pulling it out, not putting it into CalPERS is we use it specifically when we're under the most stress rather than kind of spreading it out. Could you comment on that?
I wouldn't argue with the mayor on that one. I think that makes sense.
Okay, Councilmember Spector?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The mayor was talking about, I think, budget stabilization. And I'm glad that you brought up this graph because when John Bartel made his presentation to us, first of all, I thought his presentation was great. I wish we'd had more time because he talked about health benefits for maybe 40% of the time and then the pension for about 20% of the time or maybe even less. But this, out of all the materials that he gave us, was for me the most significant because the numbers that he gave us to go along with that is if, for example, the town is paying $5 million for its, for its unfunded liabilities now, well, it's gonna go up to 10 million. I think I remember those numbers correctly. So it's gonna be a significant increase, whatever that increase is, and the green part of that graph depicts the significance of the, of the increase. And the reason that the Finance Committee, now the Finance Committee did not hear Mr. Bartel's presentation and they probably, unless they've done some homework on their own, they were not given this graph. But what the Finance Committee has been talking about is, as the mayor pointed out, is keeping the number, the funds in the 115 Trust. And I don't think we've made a decision or a recommendation as to when to disperse those monies, but to, as the mayor pointed out, not to just give them to CalPERS. So that is one thing. And the other one is that we should be, we, the reason that the Finance Committee brought up the issue of the reserves and had, had them all listed, and Mr. Bartel said the same thing, is if you have the monies in these funds, there is nothing in that we are doing in these funds that the staff just presented to us. There is nothing bad in any of these things. All of these funds are for good things. However, there comes a time in one's life and in the town's life where you have to prioritize. And if we're at a situation where our, I'm gonna just use my numbers, 5 million goes up to 10 million, then that might be a situation where it would be better served for us to use our, some of our reserves to pay that down rather than have it keep going up the way it is planning to go up. So that's what our reserve analysis or investigation was about from the Finance Committee point of view. And I just, I just wanted to, I don't know how this is all gonna feed into the council as a whole, but that's what we were doing.
Council, Councilmember Jensen?
First procedural question, we're just listening to these numbers today, we're not making any decisions, correct? We're gonna get the audit and then we're gonna make decisions?
That's correct.
At the end of the year? Okay. That's my first question. Second question is, Mr. Conway, you brought up very briefly in your presentation, the return that we're getting currently on our reserves at about 2% and that there are some members of the public who think, Mr. Rennie said that we can make more. Isn't the town as municipality severely restricted in what it can invest in by California law? For example, the local agency investment fund? And hasn't in the last 30 years, basically the return on that been about 2% with a deviation up to 5%? I think it was in 2007 or 1991?
Yes, California law because of, you know, the San Jose incident in the 80s and a number, Orange County's bankruptcy and a number of, of issues where governments were taking more risk with the monies, using derivatives, if everyone remembers the word derivatives, derivative products and that sort of thing. California law is very specific about the types of investments that we can invest our, our idle funds in, monies that we place and hold for use later. And the instruments that we can invest in are generally US Treasuries and things like US government agency securities, like federal farm credit and those sort of things. They all have lower, they're lower, very low risk, but have lower yields. So, but I must remind council that safety, liquidity and yield in order of priorities is how we manage the town's money. So we don't wanna lose our principal. So safety, liquidity and yield is kind of our mantra in the investment world. So following California government law and being very prudent with that, we do limit, we are somewhat limited in our annual returns. So they, in general municipalities have had, I wouldn't say, you know, it'd been, they've been very moderate returns in recent years.
Just to follow up to that?
Yeah, go ahead.
The safety, liquidity and yield, that's, that's state law as well, that's not.
That's actually in our investment policy.
But isn't that based on state law?
I believe so, yeah. It, it mentions a prudent investor rule, so yes.
So for our discussions, along with what I also, what I requested about GFOA, would this, I would very much appreciate if the staff would come forward to us with exactly what types of investment vehicles are available, what kinds of returns can be expected on that so that the council can fully and completely evaluate in a transparent manner if there is a realistic expectation of yields other than what we are getting based upon what legally we are allowed to invest in? Because if, if it is not the case that we could go invest in the stock market and make whatever, then the council should know that. So could, could the staff please give us that information?
Yes, staff could do that. I'd like to point out too, that in the quarterly investment report, we, one of the things that the staff proudly points to is we, at least since I've been Director of Finance, we've always beat the California, State of California's investment return slightly. I mean, but we're always, we benchmark against their returns and they have a huge billions of dollars, but we're, we're much smaller, but we do benchmark against that and we always report out on that. So we're, we're, we're beating them by a small margin, but we won't, if we were beating them by a very huge margin, that would might raise questions, what are you investing in? But we are trending and we can definitely provide that.
So I would add to that before Councilmember Sack. So people aren't confused, you're, we're only talking about the funds that you basically did a presentation on.
76.7 million.
If we, if we, we can invest in much more aggressive funds if we put it in our IRS 115 Trust that is dedicated to only pay pensions, then we could go. then we could go for 6% kind of returns, 5.5%, 6%.
That is correct. Under, under the federal law, once that money goes to an external trust, it loses, it's considered an expense to the government. And now it isn't bound by those same California, very heavy restrictions. And we have much more latitude. And that's why we have our Oversight Board to look at our various investment strategies that the Oversight Board, as US Council, will be part of that, looking at both the CERT trust and the PARs pension trust to recommend the appropriate risk and strategy, risk portfolio for those monies. That was the money I told you was in the external trust. 16.5 million in the CERT trust, which is the OPEB monies. And then another 1.2 currently in the, as of June 30, in the PARs trust.
Okay, Councilmember Saak.
So I just want to follow in Councilmember Jensen's question of process. So today we're reviewing all the various funds, and I appreciate that information. So what is the next step? We're waiting for the CAFER, we're waiting for the audited, and approximately we're waiting for October time, October number?
No, we, we just, the audits are coming next week. They'll be here for a couple of weeks. So that puts us into early October. And then we have, once they have examined all of our balances and do all their work, then we, as staff, have another probably five to six weeks to start pulling all the final numbers together and starting, helping create the draft CAFER. We'll take the draft CAFER to the Finance Committee for recommend, for approval and review, along with an auditor's report. And then the Finance Committee will then forward it. And we're hoping that I think by the last meeting of December to have a final approved CAFER that the council can approve. And now, so then we have final numbers for June 30, 18, all blessed by the audit, all done. And then we're suggesting that we then take those balances, now we have final numbers, to our June strategic priority session with council and see if there's any reprioritization of any of those monies from that CAFER, those balances that we know we have on hand, and let council have that, have that bite at the apple.
And if I may just continue. So last time we looked at this, I believe that we were talking about $700,000 that were, that we were looking at, maybe used, maybe not, but it was going to be all dependent on the CAFER. Is that correct?
Correct, yes. Under our general fund reserve policy, we appear, based on the pre-audited numbers, that we will have the 700,000 available to go into the pension trust.
Okay. So then, again, if you could just explain to me this 5.2 that's to be allocated, this is, again, 5.2 extra? Where is this, and when I'm looking at the general fund?
Yeah, the, it is, it, I would say it's 4.9. As there's, remember that under the general fund reserve policy, we, if we have adequate year-end surplus, which we do, 300 of that 5.2 is going to be placed by our auditors into the pension reserve. And then there's the additional 400,000 contribution, which we budgeted in this fiscal year to place into the reserve. And we said in the policy that we would budget it if we had adequate savings from the prior year, and it looks like we will have that. So in this budget, there's 400,000 that council approved with the caveat that we would have enough balances from last year to do that. So there was 400,000 to add to the pension trust, plus this additional three, so 700,000.
Okay. And then, so then my question to you is, when is the best time to have the conversation about these various reserve funds? Because we've started this discussion about budget stabilization. And so there's this idea of using money from the 115 to pay this offset. But there's also a suggestion and a conversation that's happening outside of council chambers of looking at some of our reserve to help stabilize and pay down this curve that's in front of us. When, when is the best time to have that policy discussion based on how we actually came to this 25%? Is that in the January?
I think we're envisioning that for our January strategic priority session. We'll have, you know, Councilmember Jensen, a few other councilmembers have asked for some additional information. We can probably pull that all together and show some rationale for why we have a three-month operating reserve and, you know, more information for council to look at more closely. I've had some very interesting conversations with some of our, not neighboring cities, but nearby cities in terms of their rationales for their reserves, and we can add some more.
And I know people are asking specific requests for explanation. So again, in very layperson terms, this budget stabilization, if you could explain to me, when you come back with more information, this 5 point million there, if this is not an appropriate case to stabilize a budget, what was the vision back then when creating this fund and the 25%? So that, that's the kind of information I'm looking for.
Sure, we can, we can do that.
Okay.
And from a process standpoint, if I may, when we look at our strategic priorities in January, it's an excellent time for the council to also provide budget direction. Because really, in early '19, we will start building the budget for our next fiscal year. So you will be able to determine whether or not you'd like to accelerate expenditures in one area or another, or make additional pension payments, et cetera. So it's very important for us to have an understanding of what your priorities are as we build the next budget. And then we can drill down more specifically on the funds, on our general fund reserve policy, et cetera. So if there are additional changes that the council is interested in, that would be an excellent way to kind of pull it all together. Thank you.
If I can make a comment before I go to Councilmember Specter. So Councilmember Saak is looking at something called a budget stabilization fund. And I mentioned budget stabilization, but those were two separate items. This fund is really meant for an economic budget stabilization in case of a downturn when our budget was under stress for those reasons. And I was suggesting a budget stabilization to mitigate the effects of rising pension costs, which I think are completely different things. I want to make sure that we aren't confused on those. Did you want to comment at all?
Yes, Mayor, that, I'm following, so what the mayor was saying was possibly supplementing our budget out of that PARs pension trust with some appropriate allocations out of that as an additional funding source in the years when our costs ramp up. And then the budget stabilization was really, when that was established, was more for recession-type, unexpected turns in the economy when we might need to supplement some of our operating budget with some temporary dollars until the economy recovers a bit and we're back to, quote, "normal" operations.
Very, very short-term versus the budget stabilization I'm talking about needs to last 10 or 15 years.
Yes, correct.
Councilmember Specter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I made reference to budget stabilization when I last spoke. And I was talking about the use of, let's say, the 115 trust to have that green line not be so humped and be more straight across. So that's what I was talking about also. Question for staff, because I don't recall, I find the input from the Finance Committee helpful. There are people there who have skills that I may not have, or at least not as much as they do. So my question is, we're having a December meeting, correct? The Finance Committee?
Yes.
All right. I understand we're going to look at the CAFER. Are we also going to look at the town's current reserves and get recommendations as to what to do with those reserves as it relates to our pension?
We will have a draft CAFER that will place all of the reserves according to the June 30, 2018 town-approved general fund reserve policy. That, that's, that, those numbers are going to be, you know, established in accordance with that. And I think what we're saying is, and I don't, I, right now, we haven't, we don't have a December agenda finalized yet. But we were, we were thinking that really, we, I think we've, we have addressed this issue about what is the, we have a couple of paths we can go. One is, should we be, you know, re-prior, I'm, to, I'm calling the, the, terming it, reprioritizing those reserves. And I think that that's really going to have to be something, council looks at it as a whole body, and that's why we were preferring maybe that January timeframe to bring all that. We'll have our final CAFER that Finance Committee's blessed. And then it's at that time, we would think that that would be the most appropriate time to really delve into, do we want to, do we want to look at reprioritizing any of these amounts? And should they go towards a different priority? Yeah.
And I totally, I mean, this is, this is where the buck stops. So that's where, that's where it's going to go. But will it have, this issue have the opportunity to make its way through the Finance Committee before it gets here? The issue of reserves.
The Finance Committee had a very in-depth discussion in August, which you were both part of, and so had an opportunity to opine about the different funds and the purposes for those. So we've pretty much had that conversation. Really, the role of the town council is to determine our budget priorities. The Finance Committee is not a budget committee. So we were not intending to bring budget issues to the Finance Committee. Thank you.
Okay, so if I could go to, back to my topic. So what we've kind of been looking at is, how do we find some more money and stuff it in? But we don't really know what the goal is. And my suggestion would, you know, I, you know, of course, in January, we can talk about what do we pull out of this. But I'd like to try to move us forward if the council's interested. Instead, come at it from the other direction and ask staff, and I could even make this a motion if the council's interested in doing it that way, to help create a goal. So what size fund, what's our goal? How much money do we want in a 115 trust to flatten this curve? And where do we want to flatten it? I would make the motion that staff go do some analysis for us and figure out what should our goal be? How much money do we need to then be able to, you know, based on this forecast?
Mr. Mayor, I think that's a great idea. Possibly, we could even engage our actuary to help, Bartel, to help us with some good recommendations about that.
And I was going to add to it. If you remember back when we needed to fund the Almond Grove, it's actually kind of, maybe even the size that we're trying to get to here. We needed 16 million to fund the Almond Grove. We came up with a goal, Parks and Public Works figured it all out. We said, okay, we need 16 million. We said, holy cow, how do we get there? And instead of, you know, council members looking in their pockets for cash, we asked staff, go figure it out for us. Ultimately, I think that's the right answer versus us telling you, reduce this fund, reduce that fund. I think you should help us figure out what the goal should be. And then we ask you to go figure out how we can get to the goal.
And we appreciate that because we in the Finance Department, I know the town manager, we have, paying down the unfunded liability is a very worthy goal. It's very high priority for all of, all of us. But we have a lot of other competing priorities and demands for, across our organization. So we, we're in a lucky seat to have all that in mind when we look at this thing from a very global perspective, this problem globally.
So would other council members like to make comments on this? Councilmember Jensen.
With all due respect to the mayor, I think he's putting the cart before the horse, assuming that the council all agrees that we want to increase money in the 115, that the council may have other priorities with, for example, getting our PCI up to 70 so that we can get Measure B funds to use on school buses, to do town, town infrastructure, to, there are lots of competing interests, for the town. And to, I think it's premature for us to direct the staff and the staff to agree to go off and tell us how to get to a goal that we may not all share. So I would hope that until we have those numbers before us and have a budget before us and consider where, if our funds, reserve funds are appropriate, then we could reach the question of, do we share a goal to do something with the 115? But right now, I don't share that goal. I don't have that information before me. I'm not a member of the Finance Committee.
So if I could clarify, I would say at this point, I would ask staff to define the goal, not tell us how to get to the goal. I think that's, that's the first step. And I don't see why we were going to wait five or six months to then go start figuring out what our goal is. It feels a little silly to me that we keep trying to put money in. But, you know, at first, we had nothing and we knew it was a huge wall. So we just threw some money at it. But I still think we should, if, that's the whole point, is I think staff can start working towards figuring out what is the goal, bring it to council, and council can say, well, this goal looks too big. Do you have an alternate goal? Or somehow we can come to an agreement. But I don't see that we get to the goal by how much money we can pull out of our pockets somewhere. Councilmember Jensen.
I don't want to protract this, but I, if I could equally say to staff, please come back with the goal to get our PCI to 70. We all agree on that, and I don't want to spend five months waiting for you to figure out how I'm going to get there. So it's a question of where do you want to spend the money? And I don't think the council has come to that determination. And I, what I hear staff saying is, we'll get, we'll do an audit, we'll figure out what that is, we'll come back to you, and you as a council could determine what your priorities are. Council may determine that our priority is to put more money in in 115. Council may determine that it wants to use money to get to Measure B to leverage for a school bus program. So it's not, I don't, what, the problem I'm having is that it's not a given that our goal is to increase 115 funds.
Okay, Councilmember Specter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I'm looking for from staff is using this chart as a gauge that, forget about getting ahead of our pension payments. If we are just making the minimum, and how much is that? And what percentage of our budget is it? What is it going to be? Can you go back down to the other one, please? What is it going to be of our budget when it's at the peak? And then, we have those numbers. What is it, how much, what do we, what do we think our budget is going to be about every year? And when we're at the bottom of that curve, what percentage of our budget is the unfunded liabilities? And when we're at the top of that curve, what is that going to be? And then, how are we going to pay it?
Okay, would other council members wish to comment at this point? Councilmember Saak.
Again, a question. I just need clarification now from, from Director Conway. So, understanding this chart, we've received numerous suggestions from the public on buckets of money where we can pay this down so that the curve is not as high. And so how does that differ from the analysis the mayor is asking? That had previously asked you to look at buckets of money to put into the 115. Is it just where the money is going into, whether it's the 115 versus to CalPERS? Is that the difference between the conversations?
Well, I think some of the community feedback we received was there, and when I, if you can go back to, we go, get back to our 76.7 million dollars, there was some thoughts about maybe accessing some of those monies, like the monies we've set aside for accrued vacation and sick leave and those types of things. Those are taking some of the balances we have on hand, that 76 million, and saying, we're only earning 2%. Can you free some of that money up and apply it towards an unfunded liability, towards this problem? That was a suggestion made. The mayor's suggestion, or what the other, the Bartel philosophy is, using the PARs trust, pension trust monies to over, build that, build that up, excuse me, prospectively over time, build it up to a level, use those monies then to supplant, come, pull from that trust years we need it to keep our contribution rates at a sustainable level. So that's different, they're two different, they're, you know, apple and an orange. They're a little different. And I wanted to just apologize, I wasn't, as a staff member, we just want to do, you know, as, we will follow council's direction. We want to give you the best information you have, you can get in January. And it's really not staff's decision. We'll support you however. you however, whatever priority you have and wherever direction you want to go. Our goal is to help you get there. And we'll do our level best to provide you as much information as we can. I think there's lots, as I mentioned, I was trying to mention, there's so many, there are many competing priorities for the town, and, and I'm very well, I am very well aware of that.
I'm tempted to make another comment that will keep this going, but I, you know, if I could kind of follow, follow up to Councilmember Jensen's comment. I agree with the PCI, getting the PCI seventy is something we definitely want to consider, but Parks and Public Works has already created a goal for us on that. They've told us how much we need each year, or how much if we wanted to do it quickly. We've had that analysis before. I would argue we don't have an analysis for, for what I'm asking for, for a stabilization on this curve. So that if we then go to decide, are we putting it towards the PCI goal, or are we putting it towards this goal, at least we see the goals. Right now, we just keep saying, we know we got a big mountain to climb, throw some money at it. But I don't know how much money we need to throw at it. And, and I think it's going to, it's going to be easier to give Councilmember Jensen some money for PCI, if that's what she wants, if I know what, what it takes to get to these different goals.
Yes.
Any other comments? So I, you don't need a motion from us, you just need a discussion. Hopefully, we made it lively enough for you.
Yes, I think we have some very good directions for the January Strategic Priority Sessions, and, and we'll have final balances, and we'll have a great conversation.
Okay, any other comments? I think this is our last item, so I'll call an end to this, and we are adjourned.
Thank you.